I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, one government, indivi- individual liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, little technical.
Once we get that done. Excellent. So far so good. Moving smoothly. Um, as we know, this meeting is virtual, as it was last month. Let's do our best to not step on any audio as we're speaking and to communicate as efficiently as we can, get all our information out to the community. Um, anytime someone's going to speak, please identify yourself first before you do so. Um, let's go through roll call. Um, when I call you, may not find that you're here. Mr. Tasker?
Here.
Mr. Yaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanson?
Here.
Mrs. Marcus?
Here.
Mrs. De Nina?
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Brezner has not present this evening. Also in attendance, we have Dr. Burak, Dr. Paul Lynch, Jerry Verakis, Marion Berman, District Clerk Teresa Moore, and Jack Coleman, Attorney for the District. I have a motion. We're going to begin with the approval of the minutes. I have a motion concerning minutes of the monthly meeting on April twenty-first. Mr. Deena, second. Mr. Hanson, all in favor? Uh, thank you all in favor. Uh, we'll go on to presentations. Dr. Burak?
Yes, thank you. Uh, in this day and age, especially since we've been relying on such technology, um, to get our work accomplished, it is nice that we haven't in Limbrook lost the art of handwriting. Um, not every school district is to, uh, teaches that art of handwriting that, that we feel that the traditional, uh, method of communicating is, is so important for our children. And so it gives me great pleasure that not only we teach handwriting, but we enter kids in contests where, um, their handwriting skills are tested against some of the other, uh, best hand writers a- across the state. And I'm very pleased to announce that Limbrook has two New York State winners for their handwriting skills. So, uh, we've actually already delivered, uh, shirts to their homes. Uh, so thank you, Ms. Miranda. And, um, I'm hopeful that they're wearing, uh, their shirts this evening. The first student is a third grader from Marion Street School. Audra Shone. So congratulations, Audra. I hope you're okay. Let me see if I can see you. Congratulations. And Olivia Pompanio, a sixth grader from Waverly Park. So congratulations, Olivia. Also, with a thank you and, and keep writing away. Thank you. Uh, the, the next, uh, item is actually not on the agenda. It's just a special treat. This was, uh, a season of, of music for us traditionally in Limbrook. Uh, May is the month that we hold all of our concerts. Since the closure, we have lost, um, the ability to see our middle school musicals. We had select concerts that, uh, many of us would have attended. So we wanted to do something special and we have two phenomenal teachers on, on the high school level, uh, chorus level, Mr. Weiner and Mr. W, who have worked so hard. And, and if I could show you how much time it took to edit and, and write and put everything together, uh, put a call out to students to, uh, submit, uh, a, a, a song that they're singing and they put it together and they have a very special treat for us tonight. And it really in tribute to all of the, uh, first responders who are out there hoping to keep us safe. So, so Kayla, can I send it over to you to please show the video?
Uh-huh. Give me one click.
Paul, can you confirm we're streaming?
We're having, we're having some technical difficulties.
It's all right. Take your time. That's what happens with technology. It's okay. Don't figure it out. Paul, are you able to confirm that we're streaming? Just give me a thumbs up if you can.
Okay. It looks like we have a spinning downline.
Okay. So I think we're having some buffering issues. Um, so if you, I'm gonna stop the encolade sending it to YouTube and not the YouTube stream itself. So they're gonna continue receiving it. Like, I'm gonna change the quality of the video.
Okay.
So, if you give me a quick second.
Yeah, but I'm getting messages that it's totally unwatchable. We keep freezing.
Okay, so, yeah.
It's officially the North Koreans, so there's nothing we can do about it.
I, I think the parents also missed their presentation. If we could go back to that.
Yeah, something's stopping and I can't even describe the door.
It could be that the internet saw Yinker's mustache and said, there's no way we're going public with that. So one of those two things is possibly occurring.
So...
We'll go back to the guest.
The parents of the young ladies did not hear me say?
I don't know. I'll look at it when we're back online.
I believe we have not.
We'll do it again. Listen. We're gonna get the video done for the presentation that Kayla's doing. After that, Melissa, we'll just go back and we can do that part again. Paul, this is being recorded also, correct?
Yes.
Right. So either way, whereas we, if they don't, if someone hasn't offered, they'll be able to see the recording of it. In fact, we may just proceed with that depending upon what our bandwidth, right?
Okay, well, we should be just heading back on, uh...
Okay.
Okay, I believe we're on now. So I'm having trouble opening the video.
All right. Give it a few seconds. We'll get, we'll get all attention this night. We can come back to it after another point.
So, so while we're waiting for that, let me just, I understand that maybe the audience did not hear. Um, the congratulations to Olivia Pompanio, fifth grader at Waverly Park, and Audra Shone, third grader at Marion Street, for being New York State winners of the Zane Blozer Handwriting Contest. We're very proud of those girls. And we have, um, actually delivered shirts for them to be appreciated, um, for honoring, for showing off that Limbrook still, uh, teaches handwriting skills. Um, and we're very proud of the girls. So congratulations, girls, again. I hope you were able to hear that.
And if, and if not, this is being recorded, so they will be able to, anytime, go back and watch the recording of the presentation.
Correct.
And we go...
I don't think I even heard you say that, Billy. I don't even think I heard you say that it's recorded.
Well, I mean, they know it's recorded. They don't hear. Even if nobody can hear us right now and we're getting through without that, this whole thing will be recorded. Anyone can go back and watch it. So we're gonna get Kayla a couple minutes. It's more important to take a few minutes to let her try to figure that out.
Yes.
Paul, if you want...
We have two other videos to show too.
That's okay. Everybody, if you're not...
No, the other video's worth it. This one is not in the format. I mute it.
If you're not speaking, just use your mic, because it'll help with the bandwidth. Good. Paul, by a thumbs up. Are you seeing something, Paul, that lets you know if we're streaming? Okay.
Do you, do you want to keep going with the chorus on it?
No, I'm gonna read the, uh, resolution. But even, and if, if we're not getting out there right now, I think whatever she's watching, I'm gonna address both those issues.
Yeah.
Well...
No, it's fifty minutes.
Okay. The other thing I will, the other thing I will address that I, that I missed at the beginning was, we're gonna be handling public comment a little bit differently. As announced last time and as the district clerk had informed the community, any comments to the board would be limited to, uh, a few sentences. They'll be sent in during the meeting. Um, there's no guarantee based upon this technological format that we can get to all those, but we'll do what we can to get to any that are appropriate. Any questions that come in that we don't get to that are appropriate will be handed off to the, uh, appropriate individuals in the administration and there will be an answer eager sent individually to those. Or we're gathering that information and we always include it from board meetings to board meetings. So if questions come in and it seems like it's a concern to the community at large, we then incorporate that into our meeting and then include that in the information we're presenting, as you will see that we're doing tonight. So Paul, I'm live, so we could, I could go to the resolution, because it will be recorded and I am live streaming, correct? You're gonna mute Paul just so I know that.
Looks like we're broadcasting two, three minutes back.
But I'm still broadcasting.
Yes.
I would do anything to go back in time. So if I move forward, we'll still be, any information across.
It's happening verbally with a frozen screen.
Okay. I blame you for that.
Can I, another, do you want to put up meanwhile?
Oh, if you want, uh, you can either, there's two videos. I could do, is that correct?
There's three, uh, in total tonight.
But did you want, how many videos did you want at this point in the presentation?
Three times.
Right. So Kayla, the other two videos you have, we could do later. And if some reason the bandwidth gets better, we can inclu- we can include the one you want to do now later. Is that appropriate, Dr. Burak?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm gonna move on to the resolution, which will give some time, um, to work on that. So we have one retirement resolution tonight for Mr. Luis Roja. A groundskeeper in the Limbrook Community and Free School District has announced his intention to retire effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty, after twenty-six years of dedicated service to the staff, students, and parents of the Limbrook Public Schools. And whereas Luis began his career as a groundsman in nineteen ninety-four, he was assigned the responsibility of maintaining the grounds of both Limbrook High School and the Atlantic Avenue Administration kindergarten center buildings, always keeping their surroundings neat and clean. And whereas he was often seen out early in the morning performing his duties in the front of these buildings, no matter what the weather was like, offering a friendly greeting and wishing a good day to staff and students. Luis would then continually stay at the Marion Street Grounds Garage, assisting the grounds crew with his expertise and conscientious approach to the task at hand. This included lawn mowing, sidewalk edging, small leaf breaking, winter snow shoveling, setting up and preparing athletic fields for games, and breaking them down and cleaning up afterwards. And whereas, one of Luis's most gifted skills, his colleagues or any spectator at, in an athletic event could attest to, is his ability to paint the finest quality straight white line on an athletic field or baseball softball batting anyone could imagine, pushing the paint machine with precision and accuracy. This is just a small glimpse into how much he cared for his job and who he was doing it for. Whereas to twenty-six years, Luis displayed his dedicated, hardworking, friendly demeanor and was always ready to go with calls to complete any job. And as a groundsman, that could be numerous. Whether assisting a student with his ego star project, helping to paint, helping to plant dozens of trees around the back fields on South Middle School property, creating a walking trail, picking up musical instruments and delivering them to the high school for concerts, transporting wrestling mats to big tournaments, installing the protective netting around our fields for the fall season, setting up our home run fence for baseball, or even occasionally helping out inside a building when the consulting was out. Whatever it was, he was always ready, willing, and able. And whereas, Luis was a member of the district's in-house aspect of the maintenance team for many years, as well offering more, more of his maintenance talents and other helpful capacities in the Limbrook public school district. And whereas he has been an extreme and exemplary employee and a valuable asset to the grounds department and will be truly missed as he prepares for his retirement and the next chapter in his life. We wish him and his wife, Adriana, all the best as they continue to travel, see their children Jacqueline and Harry, and their spouses, spending time with their two grandchildren. Whereas we thank Luis for your wonderful career and service to the Limbrook Public School District. Now, therefore, it resolves that the Limbrook Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation of Mr. Luis Roja for the purposes of retirement. Congratulations. Kayla, how are you doing on that first video at this point?
Um, it, the only thing I can do is a screenshot. I might not show. The only thing I can do is do a screenshot, but it might not show on the stream. That's the whole issue. Uh, that, that's the whole point.
But, but wait, hold it. If Paul, if she, if she shows it on the screenshot, even though it doesn't stream, it will be included into the recording, correct? So we have to do it, because if they don't see it live, as soon as it's recorded and posted, they're gonna see it.
Okay, I think I have a workaround.
If you like to improvise, you have to move it up.
Give me one click second. And I might be able to do it. I'm gonna share the video. It's showing on the...
Anything worthwhile is worth the wait.
Can you see that?
Yes, we can see off on the screen.
Yeah, it's very good.
Uh, it's not showing on the...
We had it for a second and then it bounced off.
Okay.
There it is again.
All right. So, I'm gonna cut. It's live. All right.
Just need volume on it. Kayla, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can hear you.
There's no volume. Get it started.
There's no volume on the video.
This is, this is part, this is part of New World of Rinse. So just take a few minutes or change if we can get it right.
It should be showing now, you know. I have a YouTube link. YouTube link.
Should we put it on the website? Just put the video on the website? Sure. So we don't have to figure this out? Wait a second.
We're gonna try, we're gonna try include it, because it's important to have it as part of our presentation. It could take a couple minutes to do it. If not, it will be included, it will be included as part of the recording.
I'm so sorry about that.
Okay, that, that's, 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 that's just the way it is now.
I mean, it's kind of...
Oh, good.
Okay, okay.
Paul, Paul, from what machine? My thumbs up. We're streaming right now live?
I'm seeing the video with audio.
I'm told that there's no sound.
We have... She has media. Then I go... Should be showing.
Hey, I told you guys we should learn my song. I could sing. I could train. I could become very famous.
Are you able to sing?
I'm begging you on behalf of the community not to sing.
We'll lose all our viewers.
Are you able to hear anything?
I'm getting text messages telling me that people can hear.
I can hear it.
Okay.
Right. I don't see or hear it.
I, I can't hear.
Mine says external site. Wouldn't present to a right to web access. Open a website on your computer.
Oh, so it's letting you a link. Okay.
I don't know.
Why, you clicked on that link?
Yeah, 'cause I, I saw the YouTube link.
I can hear it now.
Okay. This is not working for me.
Well, we're not seeing it, Kayla.
Okay, so I'm gonna get, um, the video going for those on the screen.
That's awesome. That's awesome. For those that did not see that, it will be posted on the website as a link, Dr. Burak. See if I can be able to get access to it. It's still muted, Doc.
It's muted. Uh, yes, we will, um, put this on our district website. It will also be included in this. I'm just so grateful that we were all able to see that together. I think that's a community video. Um, so appreciative to, um, Mr. Weiner and Mr. Weiner, the two Mr. Ws, uh, for putting that together and all of the participants.
Dr. Bear, hold on a second. There's still a technical issue with the transfer. A little bit of rage.
No, it also seems to be available through YouTube, so people can do that too if they can access the website.
As long as they know how, as long as they know the keyword to search for it.
Yeah, right, right. Now, probably a private channel.
Right.
Okay, we're live.
Dr. Burak, maybe you can save us. That was actually very impressive. Maybe you can tell us a little bit more about it.
Yes. So, so I just wanted to thank Mr. W. Mr. W. Again, um, that was outstanding. And thank all the participants. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, I had asked Mr. Weiner, since we're, we're losing out on all of this music, uh, entertainment, is there something he can feed together? And I knew that his creativity and his passion and desire to connect with the kids, he was gonna be able to do that. And, and Mr. W, um, he, he has this talent of slicing. And he actually did something for his own church choir. So they, they collaborated. They put this together. And I'm forever grateful, because I think it was so important that we as a community were able to see that and, and share that with our first responders. So thank you to the two high school gentlemen. And thank you first responders. We hope that, um, you, you like that tribute. It's the least we can do for everything that, uh, you're doing for us.
Yeah, very impressive. Moving on. Uh, Mr. Tasker, cast hands to the board.
Okay. First of all, I missed the video, so I'm gonna have to watch it on YouTube.
Very impressive.
It didn't show on my screen, but, um, we received a lot of emails this, uh, this past couple of weeks. We received, uh, three emails from one family praising staff, uh, for each of the schools that the kids, that their kids were in. We received email from PTA Council concerning a lack of, uh, social interaction, requesting short period of small group live instructions, uh, or live interactions led by the faculty, uh, one to two times a week. We received a question, an email about a question about summer school for elementary students. And, uh, in that email was also a question about if curriculum will be adjusted for next year. We received several emails focused on a better system, um, assignments using more, a more uniform platform and more structure. We received an email about, uh, cons- for two emails about concerns that not enough was being done for the special ed, uh, children. Uh, we received an email from a parent asking for more mental health money in next year's budget. And we also received a letter on the same subject. We received a hundred and twenty emails as of today at three P M., uh, with concerns about distance learning and the lack of live instruction for the well-being of the kids. And we received an email from the L T A with concerns about live instruction. We also received a thank you for sympathy card that was sent. And that's, uh, that's it.
Our representative trustees, anybody have anything they want to report on?
Um, I would just like to comment on, um, the drug side of the high school last Friday, which was a very nice event. I know that, you know, it was just one thing, it was really a beginning of many things that we can, uh, honor, to see your class. But, you know, it was, it was more than I expected. And it was nice to see the teach, the teachers that were out, the, uh, admini- administrators, essential within, um, um, and it was just a great way to bring everybody together, even if we were separately from, you know, our parts.
Yeah, I'll add on, on to that, Ellen. I actually, I wasn't sure what that experience was gonna be like, with so many of our, you and I both having, uh, stuff that are seniors. And I wasn't sure what it would be like, because they're losing out on so much. But it really was, you can actually feel the energy that was in the air, the feedback that was great. It was really special, much more special than I anticipated it would be. So it really was a nice thing. And to see the staff and the students and the community out there, that was great. Really was. Much appreciated.
And I would just like to thank the police and the fire department for helping out. Um, the, the floodlight truck was, uh, delivered so that we would have more elimination. And the police lit up their car. So I'd just like to thank the fire and police department also.
Seeing that there's nothing else, and the board, moving on to old business. There is none, so on to new business. So, um, change, as everyone knows, in budget vote this year and board member voting. So, um, the governor put in an executive order two oh two point two six. Due to health and safety concerns associated with COVID-nineteen pandemic, the annual school district election shall held place remotely. It will be held on June ninth, twenty twenty, by absentee ballot only. All qualified voters will receive an absentee ballot with a postage paid return envelope. The district must receive such ballot by now or drop off in the now box at the Limbrook Administrative Building at one 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 Atlantic Avenue, Limbrook, New York at five P M. on June twenty-ninth. Of course, we'll have further conversations, uh, saying about what that process will entail and how that's gonna actually be done. Uh, individuals...
It's nine still. Not twenty-nine.
It's June ninth, twenty twenty.
Right.
Individuals interested in running for the Board of Education may declare themselves to be a candidate by emailing the district clerk no later than five P M. on May eleventh, twenty twenty. Requirement assigned petition has been raised. Uh, this information will be posted on our website under finance and budget. Anything from other, any board members regarding this executive order? Anything else on the initiative?
We don't know how votes are gonna be counted or anything, or board responsibility for, uh, meeting to, um, to, uh, cer- certify the vote. to, uh, cer- certify the vote.
We, we don't, we don't have any details yet.
Right, my understanding of-
Can we just stop? Are we, uh, live streaming right now, Kayla? Have we lost on stream?
I had to reconnect right now because there was a big chunk.
I'm muted, Kayla.
Sorry. I just had to, um, reconnect it right now. It was not streaming. We're live now.
Okay.
I've been receiving a lot of texts that people aren't seeing.
Listen, to those that can hear, Ken, that's just the reality of what we do. We have to keep pushing forward. The information will be disseminated the best we can and this present, this, this board meeting will be recorded and be available. Paul, how soon will this be available to the community as recorded on board meeting?
Dr. Lynch? I'm, I'm in another window working on the problem. I, I just asked Kayla that question. I-
Okay, so at the end, at the end of the board meeting, we'll announce when this will become available. There'll be links to the videos. So whatever's lost down in real time, everyone will have the opportunity to hear what's being done. And luckily, we get to do this again in two weeks.
Sure. Yeah, Kayla's indicating that it is being recorded in real time, so everything we're saying right now will be posted, yes.
It sounds like the- The community can watch this over and over again, uh, as they like it.
Can I add the video too? Add the videos into it?
Okay, thanks, Kayla. Perfect. So again, none of those videos of our children will be missed and the content of this, uh, presentation will be available. So, um, to Rob, to your point, we have phone calls in. Uh, as much as I think I get information from general counsel quicker, Terry gets information before any of us. It's like the governor makes a decision, he hears about it first and it gets disseminated to the rest of them. So, um, they are aware of our concerns with the logistics and how that's going to be done. I might have to check out some statistics for the year and, um, you know, this, this is what we're trying to deal with. So, um, nothing else on the new business?
And the cost of it to get this-
Yes.
And I did bring that up to the senators today as well.
Um, Dr. Birak, can you give attendance report?
Can I ask a question? I, I'd like to start off with some happy news, um, for the eighth year. In a row, Limerick High School has, um, received to be highest, uh, recognition by New York State and that is to be designated a, a recognition school, uh, a recognition high school. So that, that's for their high achievements. And so we congratulate Limerick High School and all the staff, faculty, um, of LHS for, um, the standards, uh, that we support and for the academic achievements of our students. So congratulations to the high school. Um, as you indicated also, May twentieth, um, we are adding a budget work session during these times. There is so much to discuss. And so the board will be meeting a little more frequently. So we'd like to have just a regular work session. No actual business unless there's an emergency resolution or something that we need to pass. It'll just be a, a work session, not necessarily a board resolution. Um, and then also we will be adding another budget work session. If you recall, tonight was supposed to be the budget hearing. Um, so we will, we'll comment in a few moments. I, I will line some more dates with that because there is a timeline that needs to be followed with regard to the budget. So we'll be holding another budget, uh, hearing, uh, meeting as well. On the coronavirus update, this is, uh, becoming, uh, a norm now where I'm going to try to give as much information as I can, um, as a result of us being, uh, distance learning and remotely working and trying to, um, continue with the operations of the school district. Uh, is it, is it worth to even do the video in the beginning? I can't-
Whatever Kayla, whatever Kayla thinks would work best to increase the opportunity for us to work.
Okay, which video are you talking about?
I, I'm not ready for it now. I just want to know, do, uh, you, will you be able to show it?
The year twenty twenty video?
You're muted.
The year, the year twenty twenty video?
Yes.
But, um, that one works.
Oh, okay, all right. So, so last night, uh, last month, I started my comments with somewhat of an inspirational message, at least it was for me, to provide some words, um, to help keep us going. This month, I stumbled upon a video that was actually created by a program called, quote, Maker. So I, I thought it would be appropriate to put in here. It was actually created by a British teacher, as you'll see the way some of the spelling of the words, um, that are in the video. Uh, but some of you may have already seen this, so I'll apologize for that. And there are a lot of videos and a lot of information going on to help get us through, so maybe you did see it. But it's not, this is worth sharing as a community also. It's, um, generally thought provoking. So, so Kayla, if we can, can we please share the video?
Sure.
Is it muted? So, so some of that gives us something to, to think about. Um, what will we make of this pandemic outbreak? As Governor Cuomo stated, we must reimagine our new world. Until there is a vaccine, things will be quite different. As we roll out programs, they will take on a different look and feel, but it will be in the best interest of the public, of the health and safety of our students, staff, and families. I have to start off again by thanking everyone for supporting our food collection drive. At the April meeting, I mentioned we were in need and in true Limerick fashion, more food came and came and came. The P V A delivered their donation and asked what more they could do. Island Harvest made another donation of a hundred adult meals. Limerick Eat Rockaway Stocker donated food and gift cards. Individual staff members have donated gift cards and food and some had it delivered directly from Amazon to our food pantry. I want to thank those, um, who have been so generous, um, and I'm so grateful for their generosity. Anonymous families donated partners of sponsor and sauce and other food staples. Very quickly, our food pantry became fully stocked again. It's truly heartwarming to witness the support of the Limerick community. Thank you all. Earlier, I reiterated that the governor's message was about reimagining ourselves. I think we learned a great deal about the need of fellow community members in our food pantry and that will most likely remain a part of the Limerick school. Our new unspoken mission should not only include academic nourishment, but the nourishment, physical nourishment for our students. Last week's Friday Bulletin indicated we would be holding our summer high school program. In a year where passing of the course will also earn you the required regent credit, we will be moving forward with that program. It will be taught virtually through live online instruction, but not holding the program in our physical school setting. Our custodial crew will be better able to keep our buildings disinfected and prepare our classrooms for the new school year. Mr. Finder and the teachers will be discussing logistics of delivering the instruction and the grading mechanism for the program. We are going to take advantage of nice decisions to award credit without needing to pass an actual regent's exam. Anything we can do to help benefit these kids and, and give them the credit to graduate. Unfortunately, social distancing is not something that we can achieve with our existing summer playground program. It is with great regret that I have to inform you that we'll have to cancel the program for the summer of twenty twenty. In order to maintain the health of all in this venture and to keep, uh, this pause on, we look forward to a positive and healthy playground season hopefully in twenty twenty one. We are currently reimagining our summer steam academy. We're trying to develop plans, um, for some type of a program for grades three through five, since there is no playground program, and a, a program for grades six through eight for those who that want to challenge or to stay academically engaged. Uh, decisions, decisions are currently being held as to what offerings we would be able to provide in a meaningful, interactive manner virtually. Um, there will be a cost to this program in order to make it self-sustaining and, and I'll get into some of the financial information shortly. Uh, the next item of business is the annual budget vote, as already mentioned. Um, at the, at this time, the date of the vote is June ninth. Uh, there will be note in this person voting in school facilities. Rather, all eligible voters will receive an absentee ballot with a prepaid envelope. All ballots will be received no later than five P M. in order to be counted. Uh, we will post the budget information on our website and the budget hearing I mentioned earlier will actually take place now on May twenty sixth at seven thirty P M. virtually. Uh, once again, that will go in our Friday bulletin this coming Friday. At our last board meeting, I mentioned the fact that the next few years will be bleak when talking about finances. We do not know as of yet the full extent of the state aid cuts. As always, we will plan for the worst and hope for the best. Administration and the board realize that the cuts will impact a great many people, know that these cuts are not to report to the management on the district's efforts, but rather a necessary action to counter the dire status of the New York State economy and the loss of the traditional state aid schools received annually. I previously mentioned that our carefully planned reserves will take us to a certain point when closing the gap, but more than needed on the expense side of the house. So P T A is truly the heart and soul of the parent voice in the district. I've actually reached out to them for their input as these decisions cannot be made in a vacuum. As we receive actual numbers from the state, we will continue to share information with you. While we await further guidance from the governor's office, we have begun discussions and planning for September twenty twenty. We know things will be different, just how different remains to be seen. If social distancing continues to be a guideline to follow, all will need to be creative. A visible constraint of our building will pose a challenge and there will be an adjustment for all families, but I'm hoping any reprieve for what we're experiencing now will be a welcome reprieve. This is when we instituted new security protocols. There was a measure of inconvenience. This is yet another safety matter, one of public health safety. So there will be another measure of inconvenience, no doubt. As we develop our plans, we will keep you posted. Uh, time for some goodness perhaps? Construction on the high school addition has begun again. Contracts are following the protocols with regard to social distancing and we hope that the plan will not be delayed any further. I'm sorry, just- Okay. The district is also very much concerned with the social emotional learning. You had, uh, Mr. Passcar had mentioned the numerous letters we have received. Um, so we are very much concerned with social emotional learning component of the student's education. In that regard, we fully recognize the impassed teachers have on their students' lives and think it is critical that students maintain a connection with their teachers during this extraordinary time. There's no doubt that live interaction, even if only occasionally, will help students to remain focused and attentive, knowing that their teachers will still remember them and care about them. To this end, over the past several weeks, central administration has been in constant contact with the leaders of the L T A in an effort to make them understand just how important face-to-face student-teacher interaction is on the lives of their students. The union leadership has voiced extensive concerns regarding any type of live stream, live face-to-face interaction. And, uh, numerous questions were raised, including topics such as professional development and code of conduct to students and parents during the live sessions, to name just two. Professional development has been ongoing during this closure and as new tools are rolled out, we continue to provide training. Our staff developers have been invaluable and have been working around the clock to support our teachers. In addition, the code of conduct does cover infractions which take place out of our building. However, the Friday bulletin itemized, um, last, uh, week, a set of protocols. And just so everybody knows, it was not only put on our website, it was actually emailed to all parents via a parent link. Um, but it itemized a set of protocols which must be followed by our students and other household members when conducting online instruction. Should inappropriate behavior occurring at home during a live session, please know that the student is removed from the session and if inappropriate behavior continues, the session may just be ended by the teacher. Such behaviors will then be reported to the principal and addressed according to the district code of conduct, which can be found under the parent students link on our website. Those protocols will appear in each week's part of the script as a reminder and we hope that all will abide by these standards. I would be remiss, however, if I did not identify that some teachers have recognized the value of live instruction with their students and have been doing so. And I have actually personally thanked those teachers as well. Starting next Monday, May eleventh, there will be an added phase now in our distance learning plan. This will include teachers inviting students to a live drive-in, drop-in office hour each week. The schedule of those office hours is being shadowized and principals will be sending the schedules to families by the end of the week. Students should be encouraged to take advantage of these office hours with their teachers. We have to and will continue to provide teachers with a professional development focused on the use of district-approved technologies to provide live-stream constructional opportunities for their students. We realize that this is an extremely difficult time for everyone, parents, educators, and students, but it is the most, it is most important that we focus our best efforts on the students to help them navigate through this disciplinary situation. And now just to share some of the great things our teachers are doing right now in the classroom, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Belikas to show some, um, examples as part of his curriculum update. Last video, Kayla.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Birak. In the spirit of teacher appreciation, the, the curriculum update highlights some of the excellent work that our teachers have been doing with remote learning. We are very fortunate to have such a dedicated faculty and please don't hesitate in joining us. I think thanks in this way. Enjoy.
Daddy. The ethernet is issue. I'm starting nothing. Something's not happening. The thing is, you can't do anything because it's gonna mess up anything I have, but. Daddy, I'm ethernet. It's showing me that I'm only getting 500 and about 200 kilobytes per second. That's why the connection's so bad. So don't touch anything because it's gonna drop everything. Oh. I'm on half manageable. No, I know. I'm just telling you not. Hmm? No.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
Dr. Burek's message was not heard when she spoke before the presentation. Will it be clear during the streaming, or should it be repeated, or could you send it out in a written version? Because it was missed.
Everything, everything, as I understand, Dr. Lynch, correct me. Everything we did here that was smooth and clear is how it will appear to people when they listen to it on the website.
Yeah, that's correct, right?
Yes, I started the recording from the beginning of the meeting.
Right, so therefore that will flow in real time.
Yes. What are we showing here?
Kayla, when do you think the video will be available and the meeting will be available for the community to view?
I will hopefully try right after the meeting.
So by tomorrow, it should all be up within a few days?
Yes.
Right, thank you. Dr. Burek? You're muted, Dr. Burek.
Don't forget, the highlights of what I shared will also be in this Friday bulletin.
I think you and Dr. Blackis still have before.
Well, I turned it off actually, Dr. Lynch, capital project update.
Okay. All right, so as Dr. Burek indicated, the high school project is up and running again. It started last Monday, and so the crews are on site there. And then we actually are going to start the summer projects kickoff meeting starting tomorrow. So tomorrow, we'll be meeting on the Waverly Park elevator and the Marion Street air conditioning. The preliminary part of the Marion Street air conditioning project is an electrical project. So there will be a large excavation on Marion Street in front of the building, so the community should be aware of that. We'll also be meeting on the West End HVAC project also. So those big summer projects are all gonna start to get on.
Dr. Lynch, can I ask a question? With the summer projects, now that there's no school for the remainder, no school on site for the remainder of the year, will those projects start earlier so they're completed?
Yeah, so this is, as a matter of fact, this project meeting that we're having tomorrow would not have happened until late June, so we're actually moving up to five months.
Great, okay.
And that's the report, Mr. Doma.
All right, so as we move on to public comments, there was a few talking about the quality of the lag and the streaming and how that was handling. I assume, Dr. Lynch, that's obviously something we'll look into and forward that. Obviously, you know, some of the comments there were concerned about how that's going to indicate the educational process. As I understand it, for those teachers still in life, that had not been a common issue. So this seems to be more of an aberration to whatever particular issue took place tonight. But again, that's the issue with technology. Our goal is to continue to move forward to get better at what we're doing. So this is all new. We're writing playbooks here where playbooks have not been written. So our hope is to continue to get better with our use of technology. I think our board meetings themselves will become more efficient each time we move forward. And that's our hope, to continue to progress. Appreciate your comments, Dr. Burek. We understand that we saw some examples of what's being done with technology. I think the standard we're looking to get to is we don't know what the future's gonna hold for us. We hope to see a steady increase in the interaction and the management of using technology with our students to enhance this experience for them and do that all the way through into June. Hopefully, in two weeks, we'll have a better sense of how far into June we'll be going. But the real goal would be that we don't know what the world situation will be in September. The governor has made it clear he's concerned about our ability to open up schools and how we'll socially distance. So hopefully, you know, our community, our staff, our students become more efficient with this technology. It's one of the easiest resolutions we'll have, is if we have the ability to have full-day live instruction at some point in the fall. It would be, I don't know if we can reach that goal, I don't know what the district is doing, but that would be a great thing to do. It would really help us resolve the issue of what we're gonna do with social distancing. We can start school in September and everything can be fine. The governor can see a flare-up. He's been very clear on the numbers. We can all see how he's making his decisions. If all of a sudden, the end of September, October, he tells us we have to go to remote learning, one of the options hopefully will be that we can have some level of live teaching and keep it seamless for our kids. But hopefully, we're seeing progression in that area, and I think that's working well for us. Before I get to public comments, anything else on the board? So on public comments, obviously, the question about buffering. And then the other comment was about how the budget will be affected by reductions in state aid and the tax cap issues. So I think as Dr. Burek and Dr. Lynch made clear, we will have a work session on the 20th of this month, and I believe our budget meeting is on the 26th. Is that accurate?
Correct.
I think so. We have one meeting, which will be in two weeks from now, and then our budget hearing will be the week after. So as we all know, everything is changing so rapidly. Every day, we're getting new information. We're still waiting to get some information from the governor, how our school year is gonna end. So in two weeks, we'll have a whole lot of new information that we can talk about. And then at the budget hearing, we'll be able to address at least to the point of what information we have at that time, what we're looking at, and what we'll be doing for next year. That was all we had from the public comments. Nothing else on the board. I'm gonna move on to the next part of our meeting, going on to acknowledgements and donations. The board greatly acknowledges the following donation of $1,065 from the West End PTA. from the West End P T A to use to fund various assemblies at the West End Elementary School. And then moving on to superintendent's recommendations, I'd like to ask for a consent agenda on resolutions twenty oh five C one, twenty oh five C seven, twenty oh five N C one, and twenty oh five G one through twenty oh five G twenty-eight. Have a motion, please, Mrs. Hanson, second Mr. Yeaker. All in favor? No opposition. Have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda. This is the Nino, second Mr. Passcott, all in favor. Again, as we, as we go to our, our final motion, I want to thank everyone, any administration, and our staff, and our students. I think our community is working very hard under very trying times to do the best we can for our kids. Thing to keep in mind is we're constantly moving forward, we're getting better all the time in what we're doing. That's what, efforts are greatly appreciated. As noted, there were some technological issues this evening, however, by tomorrow, this entire board meeting will be posted up. We'll have the ability to watch everything, including the videos. We have the ability to correspond by, uh, email to the board at our email address. Information we gather between board meetings is reviewed and responded to, or it's included in the presentations by the administration and by the board for our following board meeting. Thank you again for attending. At this time, to have a motion to adjourn to going to executive session discussing the added personnel, Mr. Passcott, second, Mr. Tan, uh, Marcus, all in favor? Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Lynch, do we have a link for that?
I'm about to send it out.
All right, so appreciate your attention. Everyone, look for that link. Thank you to the community. And let's get back in there in the afternoon. Thank you, Kayla, for your help tonight.
No problem.
Look for your links, I'll get it into executive session.
Thanks, Kayla.
Thank you.